It is much harder than it looks for on the other side. I'm saying we need to expand. Put it in the bucket.
We have a spill on Alpha.
He'll reconsider.
You'll do yours first? I'll let you go first. Or you want me to go first?
It is now six o'clock. Begin the meeting.
Will Hyman.
Here.
Gary Key.
Here.
Jim Alfa Joe.
Here.
Jerry Riffle.
Here.
Wayne Ward.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenkins.
Here.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
This evening, we have our prayer and our pledge by Councilmember Hyman.
Gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity to call the people for a meeting. We thank you for each and everyone who's here today because you have blessed us with supportive people who seek the welfare of your people and your city. Let your wisdom lead this meeting today and guide us to make the right decisions. May this meeting be lively and productive, and may the desired outcome be achieved. We give you thanks and praise.
Amen.
Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we had a proclamation presentation for Small Business Saturday.
Except this on behalf of small businesses in Clarksville. Whereas the government of Clarksville, West Virginia celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-one point seven million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees, and that are responsible for sixty-five point one percent net of new jobs created from two thousand to two thousand and nineteen. And whereas small businesses employ forty-seven point one percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, eighty-eight percent of the U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in a way that the pandemic and ninety-two percent of small business owners have pivoted the way they do businesses to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas ninety-seven percent of small businesses Saturday, shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, eighty-five percent of them also encourage friends and family to do so. And whereas fifty-six percent of the shoppers reported, they shopped online with small businesses on Small Business Saturday in two thousand twenty. And more than fifty percent of consumers who reported shopping small endorse their local business on social media or shop at local businesses because of social media recommendation. And whereas Clarksville, West Virginia supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocate, advocate, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, James Moreno, Mayor of the City of Clarksville, you here by Brooklyn, November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, as a Small Business Saturday.
I'm glad you didn't read the whole thing. So I got a, I got a call today from my son. And he, he was, he voted for Mr. Mordell Square Deal Shoe Shop. And he said he was in a car accident today, and he showed me pictures of it. And I was surprised that he wasn't hurt very, very badly. But it made me remind, it reminded me that he did start his small business. That was the first job he had, was working with Mr. Mordell. Mr. Mordell died, and he was able to keep the Square Deal Shoe Shop going. And it's still going out to the mission, the mission that has, has been going. But I was just reminded of that today when he called. There are so many things that we can be thankful for. And I, I wrote a quote down that says, this isn't gonna be as long. Here, when you support a small business, you are supporting the dream. And our small business, Stonewall Coffee, celebrates five years in downtown Clarksville next month. One old downtown building that had really good bones to it. Used to be Judge Matisse's office was in there, and Rod Russo and Jim Martin owned it at the time. And we put everything we had into it, and everything the bank would give us into it. And we, we made a house upstairs, an apartment. We lived there, and we had our small business underneath. And it's, our family lives right downtown Clarksville, and we have our business right down there. And it's a, it's a great place to raise the family. It is. We really enjoy this. We have seen steady growth in improving of downtown Clarksville, making it more attractive for small businesses. We've seen both Robinson Grant, of course, statues, clock, beautiful clock going up, plants, parking lots, the courthouse addition right now that's going on. Those are all encouraging things for small businesses. We see those things going on. We have the best customers you could possibly want. We do, we are so thankful for them. We have a police force, we have a courthouse, churches, matteries, et cetera, et cetera, that are super supportive of small businesses. Our health department, fire chief, building inspectors, very helpful, very encouraging. We, we have loved working with all of them. It's been, it's been a joy, it has not been hard. I hear some people have hard times with those things. They, they, small businesses will not have a hard time here in Clarksville. West Bank has helped us, and I'm sure the other Clarksville banks have been very supportive of small businesses. Harrison County Chamber has been a great resource for small businesses. The community has embraced small businesses in Clarksville, and I think we just need more of them. We need more small businesses down here. We look forward to the day when Main Street is a bustle again. I had a lady come into the coffee shop today. She said, I remember as a little girl going up and down the street shopping with my grandma. And I heard that over and over and over again. And wouldn't that be great to see that? And we're seeing some really steps in that, in that direction. So we're really grateful for that. I think it's coming. So please keep encouraging the dreamers. And on behalf of, as a representative of small businesses in downtown Clarksville, I'm happy to take this and put it up on our wall at our coffee shop. Thank you so much.
Approval of amendments of the conference work session of October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those are the passes?
Ayes aye.
Approval of the minutes of the regular session of November four, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Ayes aye.
Petitions, communications, and public hearings. Mike Perry wishes to address counsel on behalf of Riley Moore, State Treasurer of West Virginia.
Good evening, everybody. Some of you guys I've known for many, many, many years. Some of you I don't know at all. But on behalf of Treasurer Moore, I'm here to let you know I'm your new Local Government Specialist. I serve five different counties, including Harrison. I still reside in Harrison. And I just wanted to remind each of you some of the programs that the Treasurer's Office oversees and our functions and part of my role as a liaison to you and the county and the cities and the municipalities. So just briefly, you may know we handle the Unclaimed Property Division of the State of West Virginia, Board of Treasury Investments. I'm sure you all are familiar with that at least. Treasurer Moore is the Chief Financial Officer of the state. Smart five twenty-nine savings programs, college savings, if you're not familiar with that. I can get you information on any of these programs. The West Virginia Able Program helps many folks with disabilities. We have the Hope Scholarship coming forward next year after the legislative session. Jump Start is a brand-new program the Treasurer has initiated, and is the first of its kind in the state of West Virginia to help those in trades. Very similar to the Smart five twenty-nine program, but primarily for those that are going into the trade system, as we have many, many, many students and young adults and other adults that are in trades. The West Virginia Retirement Plus Program alongside of the PERS, the Get a Life Program is a financial planning tool used by middle schools. It's in every county in the state, and they're developing one for high school students as well. Many, many students are not familiar with financial planning. Get a Life is a kickstart to that in the middle schools, and we're developing that further into the high schools. All the banking services you're aware of, and we also handle the impressed audit funds. So I am now your Local Government Specialist. I'll be glad to be available after the meeting is over. I have cards for each of you, and just want to say hello and let you know I'm in the area. I'll be making my rounds. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
City Managers' Report and Update.
From the Manager's Office, the city is currently accepting resumes for the position of Director of Public Works, Engineer, Multimedia and Multimedia Specialist. Resumes can be sent to the City Manager for consideration. Interviews were conducted for the position of firefighter as one member resigned. A committee has been formed to discuss the creation of the Unsafe Building Commission, and there will be free parking throughout downtown areas starting the day after Thanksgiving and lasting through the rest of the year. Please support your downtown businesses. From the Police Department, applications for the five new police officers have been submitted to the West Virginia State Police Academy. The Department, along with the Mountaineer Lodge Number Seventy-Eight of the Fraternal Order of Police, has received fifteen hundred dollars in donations for No Shave November, which will be donated to the WVU Children's Hospital. In the past two weeks, the Harrison County Drug Task Force has served search warrants at two locations in Clarksville, resulting in ninety-two grams of meth, twenty-eight grams of heroin and fentanyl, two point two five pounds of marijuana, and two stolen firearms being seized, totaling a street value of over thirty-five thousand dollars, along with six thousand dollars in cash. The Department is looking into purchasing an infrared camera to assist with searches inside condemned structures and along the riverbanks. The drone's infrared camera system has been utilized to search for homeless encampments at night. To date, none have been found. From the Fire Department, the Department has completed their annual three-day vehicle extrication and stabilization training, and thank you Hillbilly Towing for providing the necessary vehicles. The Chiefs, the Chief has formed a committee to explore the feasibility of creating an advanced life support ALS response unit. There is a nationwide, nationwide shortage of paramedics that is hitting us locally. The goal is to have our firefighters trained and certified as paramedics to respond in an ALS unit to provide advanced medical care until an ambulance arrives to transfer patient care or continued care to the hospital. From the city parks, the indoor practice facility rentals have increased dramatically the past few weeks and will continue throughout winter. And meetings with the CVB continue as we plan to host a craft beer festival in August of twenty-twenty. From the Robinson Grant Performing Arts, the two-day performance of Stomp drew in over fifteen hundred patrons. The show was funded by the Cultural Foundation of Harrison County and the Barbera B Highland Fund for the Arts. On Saturday, December fourth, at seven thirty, will be a screening of the film White Christmas. This event is planned in conjunction with Clarksville's Winterfest. On Sunday, December fifth, at three thirty P.M., will be an AMP Productions' final concert of their twenty-twenty-one Southern Gospel season. It is Ernie Haas in the signature sound. Holiday Dreams, a spectacular holiday circus, is sold out, will be presented on Friday, December tenth, at seven thirty. This performance is funded by the Cultural Foundation of Harrison County and the Barbera B Highland Fund for the Arts. Bandale Eugene Murphy, Jr. will be performing as part of the Home for the Holidays Tour at the Robinson Grant on Saturday, December eighteenth, at eight P.M. From Code Enforcement, the Department issued thirty-six billing permits for a total project cost of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Sixty-one notice of violations were issued. Seven structures were condemned, with two moving to the demo list. Nineteen residential and ten commercial inspections were performed. Ten vehicles were tagged for towing. An animal control responded to thirty-eight calls for service, with ten animals taken at H C A C. From Public Works, crews boarded four new structures, responded to six sewer complaints, and picked up ten tons of yard waste and collected leaves. The sewer pump was replaced at the VA lift station, and one hundred and ninety-two feet of sanitary sewer pipe were installed. The Department is decorating the city so that we can, we can be prepared for Santa's arrival on December third to light our Christmas tree in front of the Waldemar for Winterfest. From the wastewater treatment plant, the plant received a D E P, D E P compliance inspection report, and five violations were issued. All have been addressed, and a plan of action was submitted to the D E P. Forty-seven manhole monitors will be replaced because they have reached their life expectancy and are starting to fail. And that is the end of my report.
City Clerk's Information, a zoning form in connection with an application to operate a private club, private wine restaurant, or tavern was filed by Kenneth Tyson doing business as Mr. Taco, four fifteen Baltimore Avenue, and returned to the applicant on November nine, twenty-twenty-one. No unfinished business? New business?
To consider for adoption by the City Council on first reading, a bond authorizing ordinance which authorizes the issuance by the city of its sales tax revenue refunding bonds, Series Twenty Twenty-One A, Road Embankment Repair Project, the Series Twenty Twenty-One A Bonds, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed two million, five hundred thousand dollars for the purposes of refunding and redeeming in full the city's sales tax revenue bonds, Series Two Thousand Nineteen B, Road Embankment Repair Project. Funding a reserve fund for the Series Twenty Twenty-One A Bonds if necessary, and the payment of costs of issuance of the Series Twenty Twenty-One A Bonds and related costs, authorizing the execution and delivery of all documents which may be necessary in connection with foregoing and matters relating thereto.
Second. Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Consideration of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clarksville to apply for funding for the pickleball tennis court renovation at Veterans Memorial Park.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Consideration to disperse ARCA funds not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars to the Clarksville Park Board for the electrical upgrades to the AMBA theater.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Consideration of appointments to the Municipal Building Commission.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to nominate John and Julie for the Municipal Building Commission.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second.
Mr. Mayor, second appointment to that. I'd like to nominate Anthony Jackson for the Municipal Building Commission.
Second. First and second, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes aye.
Council Comment?
Jimmy, if you can.
First of all, I'd like to wish Mr. Moreno Happy Birthday. His birthday was this week.
Thank you.
Happy Birthday. See something, say something. Today was a perfect example for me. I was driving down Main Street, and there was a young man that obviously was on something, swinging a stick around, and had holes poked in a water bottle like he was blessing the ground. So I made a call, and I think it was, I was taken care of. I would like for the City Manager, Mr. Paul Harry, to give us a list of all the vacancies within the city. Employees needed, that needed to be hired. And if any possible way we could, you know, get these vacancies filled, and could you please have a list for us sometime in the, in the near future? Good luck to the Robert C. Byrd football team. They're in the playoffs this, this weekend. Actually, it's tomorrow night, I believe. And also, I would like to thank the Barbera Highland Fund, the Cultural Foundation, and Robinson Grand, and all of its employees and volunteers. If you missed the production of Stomp, it was a spectacular performance. I had numerous folks come up to me afterward and thank me and the city for revitalizing the Robinson Grand, and what a great venue we have. Everybody have a nice weekend and Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Jerry?
I want to thank all the small businesses for navigating through the waters and, and even before COVID. I mean, I don't own a small business, but I hear all the stories and the challenges that it's faced. Our downtown isn't where we want it to be, so it's definitely some trepid waters that they've navigated. And I know my, personally, I mean, I may go to Stonewall Coffee more than all of everybody else up here. I'm not sure. But I mean, I'm there every day. You know, my mother's daughter feeds me. Blue birthday, I eat there every day. The coffee gets me through the evenings, the late nights. But I just want to thank them for doing, doing that. I mean, it's, it's not easy, and so I just want to thank them for that. I want to second Robert C. Byrd, you know, hopefully they can win tomorrow night. I was told I'm the first member of council to ever come from Robert C. Byrd. So that's, that's an honor, and it shows my age as well. But so hopefully they can come away with a victory tomorrow and, or yeah, tomorrow. And just Winterfest, I want everybody to share it, talk about it. If you're not a part of it, you need to become a part of it because everybody is. And it's going to be a great event, and it's going to have all of downtown involved, all the churches, all the businesses. We really want to make it an event that's going to come back every year. And we've got a lot of people putting a lot of time into it. So definitely, hopefully everybody can share that and be a part of it. That's it. Everybody have a good week or Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Jerry. Wayne?
Yeah, I just want to echo, first thing what Jerry said about small businesses. Yeah, we're not quite there, what we want downtown to look like, but I have a great feeling after this comprehensive plan that, you know, here in a few years, the streetscape's going to look totally different. I'm just, just really excited about it. And about Stonewall Coffee, I don't like coffee, but I tell you what, he has the best smoothies in Clarksville. So if you don't like coffee, you can still get a, one heck of a smoothie there. And every once in a while, I'll go down there and I'll get one. So I think the peach mango is my favorite, so. And thank you for, you know, you know, weathering through some of these, you know, tough times and stuff in our downtown. And, but you know, I really truly believe things are going to get better, you know, especially after this comp plan, comprehensive plan. It's going to be really nice. The other thing I want to talk about, too, on November the sixth, we, Clarksville Community Action, you know, along with a bunch of other volunteers, and just such a community outpouring of support, and, and the help of, you know, a really outstanding gentleman that probably hardly anyone knows in Clarksville named Chad Weaver, you know, made that, the old Fox forty-six building going down the west end, painted that with the logo from the Clarksville C V B, Come Home to Clarksville. It was an extraordinary, from the, from the planning of it, all the way to the execution of, of painting that building, that was, that was complete volunteer. And, and when you drive down West Pike Street into the west end, and you see that nice big blue building now, says Come Home to Clarksville, it is, it catches your eye. And, and I'm just so blessed to, to be a, to be a small part of that. And there's other members on this council who are a big part of that, too. So when you see that, just, you know, think of all the folks that put a lot into that. And there's going to be more of that. So the last thing I want to talk about is, I, I just really commend the Police Department and, you know, Code Enforcement, Public Works, and the Fire Department, you know, for really, you know, for really staying the course and putting a lot of focus on, you know, on inspecting and securing these condemned structures. We've, you know, we passed a law making an arrestable offense to be in a condemned structure a couple of years ago. There's been some challenges in that, you know, because we, you know, we deal with the court system and stuff. But, you know, our Police Department has stayed the course with enforcing that. You know, now, you know, when I'm reading the City Managers' Report, you know, how, you know, we're doing some, Fire Department, we're going to try to do some infrared stuff, you know, with that. And, and Public Works even, you know, securing those structures. That's, that's probably been one of the number one public safety issues in, in our city is, is trying to secure those condemned structures. And, and it's, and it's ongoing, and it's hard. So I want to thank the Chief and, and the Chief for, you know, for making that happen. So that's it.
Thank you, Wayne. Gary?
I'll be pretty short tonight. Try not to talk too much like I usually do.
He says that every week.
Small Business Saturday is awesome. Thank you very much for coming and accepting that. I actually have one of those hanging on the wall at my real estate office, too, because nobody showed up one time. And I got to keep it, but I'm very proud of it. I'm one of these guys that is always starting another small business. I have about four right now. I'm always into something. And I really, really encourage people, you know, don't get everything from Amazon. It's hard to get coffee from Amazon, so you're in a good spot. Nobody's doing too much of that. So, but everything downtown, you know, deserves a look because you're getting a much more personalized service, and you're probably getting a better product in most cases. So I hope people take advantage of that Small Business Saturday and take advantage of our free parking. I wish we could go ahead and start doing this all the time, but we are going to have free parking here coming up pretty soon downtown. And I feel like every year it should be like a test project to see how it goes. So here we go again this year. I wanted to mention, me and the mayor and Will today went to an event today over at the Mission where they are changing over what used to be the Mission store. They made it a chapel. They refurbished their neon sign, the, the Saint Jesus' Sings or God Sings?
Jesus Sings.
We have to give the Mission all the credit in the world for the changes that we've been able to make. Because without their help and cooperation, I don't think we would have come as far as we have right now. I made a joke a couple of times that we should be giving Lou Ortenzio a key to the city, and I'm pretty serious about that. I might be pushing for that. But, you know, the Mission and the Mission Board, I think people that have followed me at all, I used to be one of their biggest pains in the butt, that harassed them all the time. And now I want to make it a point to recognize the changes that they've made, and what a great job they're doing helping us. So they are a partner of the city, and they deserve recognition. And the only other thing I wanted to mention was Public Works is doing a lot of extra work, getting us ready for Christmas, and CVB and Teen Yoke over there. We're really excited to see what they're going to do for Winterfest. I hope people, once again, right along with the small businesses, I hope people come out and check out the Winterfest. I hope people, once again, right along with the small businesses, I hope people come out and check out the Winter Fest. I think it's going to be really, really awesome. It's going to be a really neat event, but probably one of the biggest things downtown in quite a while. So look forward to that and I hope everyone attends. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Will? I'll get you this.
Yeah, I just want to echo everything pretty much that's been said. Small Business Saturday, get out there, support our businesses downtown and all throughout Clarksville and, you know, make their, make their holidays a little brighter. Also, want to talk about the Mission today. I was going to mention that as well. It was a lovely ceremony. It's, it's kind of bewildering that out of all the businesses in Clarksville, and I may be wrong to see the Mission go after the facade grid. We should do a better job of promoting that to get other businesses in town onboard with the facade grid, you know, trying to transform Clarksville like they did over, you know. And now I get to be Debbie Downer. As the council representative of the sanitary board, it has been an enlightening experience on the city's process on servicing and financing our city sewer system and wastewater treatment plant. Among the discussion of the November ninth sanitary board meetings, emergency projects, stormwater projects, an eventual upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant to treat the wastewater for the addition of the Clarksville Water Board's phosphate treatment for lead lines in the city, a rate increase was recommended in the form of forty-nine percent over the next five years. Twenty-four percent next year, ten percent in twenty twenty-three, and five percent every year until twenty twenty-six. With inflation up, our constituents are paying more for everything right now and these rate increases, wow, they're that crunch. I understand that the city has to adjust for inflation as well. And some rate increases will be inevitable for services across the board for items like, you know, construction items and such. But I would like to recommend to council that we come up with a plan to pay for a portion of these emergency projects and the wastewater treatment plant upgrades with the ARC funds and matching state funds and possibly even the county's contribution of three hundred thousand dollars to lower some of these rate increases, excuse me, to a more manageable level for the residents and business owners of Clarksville and the surrounding communities. Thanks. Have a great Thanksgiving and sorry.
Thank you, Will. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I wanted to talk, being the teacher on council and everyone I think here knows about my passion for, for young people. So I want to talk a little bit about our meeting last night with the Mayor's Youth Council and how moving it was to hear the students within our city talking about small businesses. So this was a great segue for that. They were so curious and excited about some of the things that they are doing on their own. One girl talked about that she liked to knit and crochet and that they have like a networking of where they sell things to one another. Small paintings, some, some of the students make jewelry and things like that. Why can't we have more of these types of niche businesses in downtown Clarksville? You know, they're asking these questions. I know nothing about business, like I told them last night. I'm not a business owner, I don't know much about it, I'm a teacher, so. But that's a great question. And I, I would like to really try to work on that excitement and really facilitate that somehow through our city, so hopefully we can get that going. To see their excitement and what they were talking about, what they would like to see and how they want downtown to feel. And I've not ever heard that throughout the years that I've been involved. You know, obviously talking to young kids in schools, you know, they say, boy, our city, we would like to see this, we would like to see that. And they were so excited about the possibilities that are to come to Clarksville. So that's, just was inspiring to me. I also would like to encourage, I think Winter Fest is so exciting. I, this is actually a project that I've not been very involved in and I'm excited to not have been because I can't wait to see what the, the end result is. So talked to Tina Yoke and I kind of nosed around a little bit about what you guys are doing, but I want it to be a surprise. I, I'm really, really excited for it, so.
A lot of good stuff.
Yeah, that, that's so exciting, I, I can't wait. I also would, my, my husband is turning fifty on Saturday. He's an old man, so Happy Birthday, Norman. But in, in his turning fifty, my son Nathaniel, who is my second oldest child, is playing in the Byrd game on Friday night. And I've just been kind of feeling so nostalgic lately because it could potentially, which I hope not, be his last, last high school football game. And I've been so involved in high school sports with my kids for so long, especially, you know, football, basketball, and baseball. And that might be the last time I sit in the stands to watch one of my own children play football there. So go Byrd, because I don't want it to be the last time. I hope that they, they do well, those kids deserve it.
Only who's older, you or Norman?
You don't ever ask a little. Age ain't nothing but a thing to me, I couldn't care less. I'm forty-nine and he's going to be fifty still. How old are you, Jerry, ten? Still a baby. Still just a baby. But Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, have a great holiday. And that's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Going last again here, the small business, that, that touches close to my heart. I've, I've been a small business owner for over the past thirty years in Clarksville. So I have, that has a special meaning to me and a place in my heart because small business is definitely the backbone of the community and of the nation. As the numbers that I read, it's very evident that small business is really important. And I'm so appreciative for you to come over and accept that on behalf of small businesses. So with that being said, we have a couple of good things here. We had the bond refinancing and redeeming, which will save the city a bunch of money over the next years to come. So I want to thank Rob and Tom for coming tonight. And I think that's, that'll be good for the city of Clarksville. You always got to look where you can save money and with you, with your help, we're, we're able to save money for, for the citizens of Clarksville. So thank you. And some of the things that we've had on the agenda, we're investing in the park system. You know, that's where entertainment and, and activities come together. We have the beautiful amphitheater and to upgrade the electric at that amphitheater would be, would be nice for the citizens to come and watch some live shows. So John, you're doing a great job over there and we appreciate you and we're happy that we can pitch in. And hopefully the, I'm, I'm an old guy, so pickleball should be my sport. But I've never heard of it, so. Once we get those courts in, maybe that, if you don't have to move too much, maybe I could do that and participate in that. But let's see, what else do we have here? I also, I want to echo that Gary and Will went to the Mission today. I was like Gary, two years ago, very critical, very, I thought the, the Mission was, was a big problem for this city. We had a lot of issues that, that were related to that. We, we, we had a mission to clean up the Mission. And I'm happy to say that after a little over two years, the Mission is, is doing an outstanding job. So if we can criticize somebody, we surely can give them thanks for what they've done. And I certainly want to do that because it was very refreshing to go. They, they have a nice chapel in there that they redid. And I think, I think it's part of our revitalization of Clarksville is the revitalization of the Mission. And they've changed their focus and they're helping people, they're really truly helping people now. So, and, and that's, that's the goal. And, and I'm in full support of, of what they've done up to this point. And it's been very positive for, for the, for not only Glen Elkhorn, but for the city of Clarksville. My nephew, Lily's son, I do wish Byrd a lot of luck. Hopefully they could win tomorrow night and keep, keep it going. And Thanksgiving, I, I wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Motion?
Sir, I'll make a motion for a German. I gotta go home and take my Geritol.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Word, Jerry.
I was going to cut in there and say.
Yes, sir.